All right, everyone. Thank you for coming out this evening. It is 7:30. The meeting is called to order. If everybody could please rise and pledge the flag. All right, roll call, please, Angela.
Amy Funahashi.
Here.
Forrie Scott.
Here.
James Fee.
Here.
Megan Nolan.
Here.
Diane Gundrum.
Here.
Tony Heil. Kynell Schank.
Here. And just for the record for the minutes, Mr. Heil is on a family vacation. He notified us ahead of time.
Mr. President, I note for the record, we were in executive session from approximately seven o'clock to approximately 7:25 with regard to personnel and potential litigation.
Thank you, Mr. Bello. And folks, before we do kick off the official agenda, I wanted to take a moment to say a few words. Many of you probably saw out there that Father Ray Tribiani passed away recently and just wrote a few words here. And then I'd like to ask everybody to take a moment of silence. So Father Ray Tribiani, he was a resident priest at Our Lady of Mount Carmel from 1973 to 1977. Despite the relatively short stay at that church, he made a lasting impact and forged relationships in town that lasted until his passing. Father Ray, or Father Trib, routinely came back to Bridgeport to celebrate masses and weddings, funerals, and parties. He became a fixture in town through his open-minded teaching, his quick wit and smile, and his lovable personality. While he went on to teach at various Catholic high schools, he had become a beloved teacher by a generation at this local church in Bridgeport. He was widely appreciated by members of St. Augustine's, Sacred Heart, and St. Peter and Paul. He was Bridgeport's priest for many, and he will be missed by all. Folks, if you could just take a moment of silence. Thank you very much. Mr. Truman.
All right, thank you. Good evening, everybody. Welcome. First up on the agenda for council consideration, approval of the meeting minutes from the March 22, 2022 meeting.
Make the motion.
Second.
Motion for Mr. Scott, seconded by Ms. Nolan, to approve the meeting minutes from March 22. Any additional questions or comments from council? Or from the public? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, that's unanimous. Thank you.
Next up for council consideration, authorization to hire Philippe LeBoutier to the position of part-time patrol officer. Mayor Jack Seer, I certainly don't want to put you on the spot, but did you have anything you'd like to say prior?
I do. Since our chief is not here this evening, he gave me the wonderful privilege of saying a few words. So, members of council, as I said, I'd just like to say a few words about the officer we're recommending for hire this evening. Phil LeBoutier of Audubon is here tonight with his mom Cathy, his dad Phil, his sister Lisa, and his grandmother Patricia. He grew up in the area, and he was an avid baseball player as a kid. When he grew older, he became more involved in ice hockey. He actually still participates in it now in his spare time, which is really fun. Up until March 2020, he worked as a radio transmissions operator for the United States Army, where he was responsible for tracking movements in the field. And during this time, he was known for his quick reaction time and the ability to thrive under pressure, as he was actually given the opportunity to operate and gun a main battle tank. And after gaining experience with the Army, he worked as a correctional officer at the Montgomery County Correctional Facility in Eagleville, until finally realizing his calling as a police officer, when he decided to attend the Montgomery County Police Academy. And he just graduated from there in December. And so, yeah, council, we present Mr. LeBoutier to you, knowing that he holds excellent communication skills, avid experience in the field, and the desire to become a great police officer. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Council, if you have any questions or comments, certainly bring them up, but I think I'd entertain a motion to authorize that hiring.
I'll second.
Okay, I'll make the motion then. Yep, that worked for me. That works, that works. I'll make that motion. So I made that motion, and Mr. Fee seconded. Any additional questions or comments from council? Or from the public? All right, then, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, congratulations, sir.
And next up, we will do the oath ceremony for Officer LeBoutier. Mayor Jack Seer.
I, Philippe LeBoutier.
I, Philippe LeBoutier.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And that I will discharge the duties.
And I'll discharge the duties.
Of my office.
Of my office.
With fidelity.
With fidelity.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Hey, congratulations, officer. Welcome to town. And folks, we have a few other items on the agenda there. Interesting, but you certainly don't have to wait for them. Have a great evening.
Next up on the agenda, a mayoral proclamation presentation to the Upper Marion Township and Montgomery County Norristown Public Libraries with regard to National Library Week for 2022. Mayor Jack Seer.
I'm very eager to welcome our guests this evening. We have Director Laura Arnold of the Upper Marion Township Public Library and Director Karen DeAngelo of Norristown. Thank you guys very much for joining us this evening in celebration of National Library Week, which was all last week. I, myself, am a librarian, and if you didn't know by now, books are very exciting to me. So this is, as my first proclamation, this is very near and dear to my heart. So it is customary to read out the proclamation. There are lots of whereas in here, so I'm going to leave them out to spare your ears, but I will do my best at a quick reading of it. So this is a proclamation of the Borough of Bridgeport recognizing National Library Week 2022. Whereas libraries are at the heart of their cities, towns, schools, and libraries foster a sense of belonging and community, and libraries and their services extend far beyond the walls of a building, and everyone is welcome to use its resources, and libraries provide access to computers and Wi-Fi, internet hotspots and laptops, and libraries strive to develop programs and collections that are as diverse as the populations they serve and ensure equity of access for all, and libraries offer opportunities to explore new worlds through technology, multimedia content, and educational programs. And in times of crisis, libraries and library workers play an invaluable role in supporting communities, both in person and virtually. And to adapt to the changing world, libraries are expanding resources and continuing to meet the needs of patrons, and libraries promote the free exchange of information, and libraries have long served as trusted institutions for all members of the community, regardless of race, ethnicity, creed, ability, sexual orientation, gender identity, or socioeconomic status. And libraries and library workers, join library supporters and advocates across the nation to celebrate National Library Week, and both the Montgomery County Norristown Public Library, the home library of the Borough of Bridgeport, and the Upper Marion Township Library, which is the unofficial library of Bridgeport, have made an invaluable and incalculable contribution on the Borough of Bridgeport and its residents throughout the years. Almost there. Whereas both the Director of the Montgomery County Norristown Public Library, Karen DeAngelo, and the Director of the Upper Marion Township Library, Laura Arnold, have demonstrated consistent, noteworthy effort and commitment to the goals and purposes of public libraries and should be recognized for their achievements this National Library Week. Now therefore, I, Beth Jackseer, Mayor of the Borough of Bridgeport, proclaim National Library Week, which was April 3 through 9 of this year in the Borough of Bridgeport. So during this week and all weeks, I encourage all residents to visit their libraries online to access resources and services. Because of you, libraries transform lives and communities. I also hereby recognize Director DeAngelo and Director Arnold for their countless contributions to our community and their capacity as directors of the two libraries utilized by the Bridgeport community. So, thank you.
Ms. DeAngelo, I love your dress.
And just real quickly, if we haven't had enough pictures, I actually have little certificates to hand out to the both of you for dedication of your service.
Laura, you don't have a book dress? Any comments from the public on the photo orientation? Thanks for coming out.
All right, thank you, Mayor Jack Seer. Next up for council consideration, excuse me, a railroad quiet zone presentation from PRDC Properties. And to give that presentation tonight, Tony Maris could not be here, so pinch hitting for him is Justin Moore of PRDC. Members of council, members of the audience, over the last, you know, 12-plus months, we have seen PRDC Properties present here for a variety of different conversations revolving around the riverfront development. Or even if they're not present, we've had some conversations regarding the overall progress and trajectory of said development. One of the things we've talked about is the potential for application to a federal rail authority, or FRA, Federal Railway Administration, excuse me, program called a quiet zone designation, which would effectively result in the Norfolk Southern freight trains that go through town would no longer blare their horns. But in order to accomplish this, it's what could potentially be an involved process. And to explain that process a little bit better, I will ask Mr. Moore to come on up and demonstrate what he's researched. So, thank you, Justin.
Thanks. Good evening, Borough Council. As Borough Manager stated, we are proposing a quiet zone. Oh, I'm sorry. As Keith mentioned, we are proposing a quiet zone. Just to give you a little background on the quiet zone, it's an FRA designation that would run from the three or four crossings that run parallel to our site on the Norfolk Southern Line. We have conducted a sound study, HUD, that follows the HUD guidelines.
Justin, real quick, pardon me, I don't mean to interrupt you. Are there, I have those four PDFs that you sent me on here. Would it benefit the audience or yourself even if you wanted me to? Which of those would you like me to pull up? The noise study?
The sound study, yep. We can start there. Page four specifically, if you could. So this just kind of shows you what, you know, the acceptable ranges, 65 decibels DBAs for the human ear would be, you know, a range that we wouldn't worry about too much. 65 to 75 is acceptable, but not great, and then anything above 75 would be considered unacceptable. The also elevation matters in terms of how sound affects the various residential portions of the site. So, you know, some of the townhouses aren't as affected as much as others, but we found that around half of the townhouses and apartment units, especially at the higher levels of the building, were affected, and they were in that 65 to 70 and slightly over 75 range. So that kind of prompted Lennar and ourselves to start the discussion of proposing the quiet zone, so that, you know, some of the residents would not be affected by those elevated decibel thresholds. So if we could look at the QZ guide. This will just, well, Keith's bringing this up, this will kind of just give you the background on how the quiet zone process works. It's an FRA, as Keith mentioned, it's an FRA application that we would submit there. Basically, we would identify the crossings that would be affected by it, which are the crossings that run along the site at Mill, from Mill Street and Depot to Front and Fourth. And we would propose, there's a number of different, what are called SSMs, which are safety measures that are improvements to each of the crossings that would make them safer, just because the horn's not being blown any longer. So we considered a number of these, obviously cost is a part of that. As Borough Council is aware, we are also pursuing a TIF that would cover the cost of these improvements, even at the highest range of the safety measures, which would be the four quadrant gate system that we're talking about. So for each of the four crossings, those measures would be covered by the TIF. And just as a backdrop, there's also a number of federal grants that are available to cover these improvements as well.
Mr. Moore, in your preliminary exploration on this, do you have an idea of, obviously we haven't made application at this point, but do you have an idea of what the à la carte menu of different upgrades they may impose upon us? What they might have in store and estimate ballpark cost on each crossing?
So the cost can vary from as low as $30,000 to $1 million. We've kind of ballparked all in, all the crossings around $700,000.
So about two and a quarter, 250 each?
Right.
Okay, thanks.
And again, you know, just to reemphasize that, you know, we would be, while we're taking out the horn, we'd be making significant upgrades to the crossings in terms of safety, in terms of signage, gates, medians, and even electronic sensors. So I know insurance and risk is something that's come up in this decision, so noted for the council. And then finally, I just wanted to emphasize, you know, there's the packet provided to council and the federal state partnerships packet. That just will give you all the different programs and how the applications work. It would actually be the Borough applying for any grant money. There are, on top of the costs associated with putting in the safety improvements, there would be an annual maintenance cost associated with running these crossings. Norfolk Southern is actually the party responsible for maintaining them, but they would be reimbursed by the Borough. So we've estimated those costs to be about $20,000 to $25,000 a year. And again, grant money can be potentially used to fund that.
And that's into perpetuity?
Correct.
Okay, no...
As long as Norfolk owns the...
As long, correct. As long as the upgrades are in place?
Correct.
Yes, understood. Thank you, Mr. Moore. And I'd like to just note, on a lighter note, Justin, I believe from what Mr. Maris said to me, this is your first time presenting publicly?
Yes, it is.
It is. Yeah, I want to say you did a hell of a lot better than I did my first time.
Thank you.
So, you know, no need to feel any nerves in front of Little Bridgeport.
And I would just add that I'm just thrilled Tony's not here.
I'll second that.
I have a question. Can you explain the TIF a little bit? What is it? How much does it cover? What are you applying for?
So the TIF is a tax implemented financing that basically takes the future tax revenues that would be associated with our particular parcels and all the residential units on that parcel, and it captures that money in a certain span of years, predetermined years. And we would use those proceeds to fund any improvements such as, you know, public-private improvements, such as the safety, the quiet zone, or, you know, any utility relocations or, you know, retaining walls or parks being put into our site.
So it wouldn't cover any of the initial things that we need to do to get this approved?
No, it would be used for, and also, you know, what should also be noted is that the Borough would be taking a portion as well. They could allocate that however they wanted, and any other participants in the TIF, such as the county or the school district, who, you know, haven't committed to anything yet, but they would deploy their proceeds however they see fit. But we have our sleeve allocated to fund three or four parts of our project that we feel has a public benefit as well.
Got it. Okay, thank you so much for your explanation.
I don't know if this is a Mr. Bello question or you folks. If this is something that the Borough, I'm all for it. For a lot of reasons personal, that train just... If we go through with this and we get this done and everything's good to go, and then there is, God forbid, something happens at a crossing, are there liability issues for any of the parties involved?
Right, so there would be, I believe there would be liability for the Borough. There would be, you know, an insurance policy. We've done some preliminary probing around what that would be, and the figure we've heard is up to $700,000 of liability.
So actually, thank you, Justin. And I can speak to this a little bit, a little bit more, because it's, to put this into perspective, there is one municipality at the very worst in this half of Pennsylvania, potentially in all of Pennsylvania. There's one municipality in Bucks County that has successfully undertaken and seen this process through to completion, Upper Makefield Township in Lower Bucks County. So there are not a lot of benchmarks or peers to review and consult on. As Justin said, there is, in some of the regulatory language that we've looked through, it looks like the municipality would need to have coverage of up to $750,000, three-quarters of a mil per incident. Because there is no real precedent or benchmark to lean on or look to, I am having, and our insurance brokers and carriers are having a little bit of difficulty figuring out exactly how this will all shake out insofar as, is there an additional policy needed? Is this simply adding on to the policy that we already have? Because, you know, in the event of an accident right now, God forbid, we will still be named in a lawsuit, you know, as it currently is.
That was my follow-up question. Is it more liability? Is it something that we are not on the hook for now? Okay, okay, understood.
So we don't have all the particulars of the insurance question yet, but we're starting to piece the puzzle together. So that's a good question, Ms. Funahashi, thank you. Or Ms. Funahashi or Mr. Schank, yeah. Both wonderful questions, yes. And if any other members of council have questions, please feel free. But Justin, and I don't know, has your presentation concluded at this juncture?
Yeah, I would add one more thing.
Okay.
Also to be considered would be, we would, in order to submit the FRA application and PUC, which is Pennsylvania Utility Commission, we have to essentially draw up a sketch diagram on our site plan of, you know, where the crossings would be, and then submit it with our applications. Our engineer, who's been on record, who's been working on this project with us, does not have a railroad practice. And so we reached out to Gannett Fleming, who is the Borough's engineer of record, and they're able to do this type of work. And we wanted to have council's approval to work with them in order to get these sketches done, should we want to move forward with the QZ.
Is that something we need a vote on?
Yes.
And we would need just something in writing as well between the parties waiving the conflict of interest, any potential conflict of interest.
Okay. Were we would be voting on approval or, I don't know, a recommendation? What's the language of the vote here?
I think it would be, and Sal, correct me if I'm wrong, but authorization to draft an agreement between...
Or Gannett Fleming to work with the parties to draft?
Sal, is that correct?
Yeah, it would be a motion to enter into an agreement with the applicant and to allow Gannett Fleming, the Borough engineer, to function somewhat on their behalf, but for the benefit of the project.
The only thing I would add, Mr. Bello, and I think I've talked to Mr. Maris about this, you know, for me to work directly for PRDC would be a bigger lift than for me to work for the Borough through my existing agreement with some understanding between PRDC and the Borough to compensate you for that time and effort.
And I agree.
And the Borough's the one submitting the application anyways, so... And the borough's the one submitting the application anyways, so.
We'll just pay the bill.
Right. That's what we love to hear. So, so...
So move.
I guess, yeah. So, somebody from council, if you'd like to make a motion to authorize Gannon Fleming to work with, with the developer on this matter?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Motion from Ms. Funahashi, seconded by Mr. Scott, to, to do what I just said. Any additional questions or comments from council? Or the public on that one? All right. Oh, yes, please, Katie, come on.
Do I need to go over here?
Please do. And your name and your address.
Sure. I'm Katie Fulmer, F-U-L-M-E-R. I live at 207 Mil. You may not be able to answer this question, but is there any research or understanding of boroughs or towns or the cities that have been able to use the quiet zone from like an accident perspective? Like, what, what was the percentage before? What was it after? Et cetera, et cetera?
I think what, what Keith would just, had just said, there's only been one municipality, potentially in the state, who's, who's been able to work this through to the end. So, I'm not sure there's much information.
And, and, excuse me, not only that, but they, whereas we just have what is generally the slow old Norfolk Southern freight line, they have Amtrak, SEPTA, and a freight line going through there. So, it's pretty heavy there. So, it's not really an equitable comparison.
Does the borough have any information on like any past incidents that have occurred? And, and the number of those that may have happened?
I know in, Katie, I know in reviewing the documents and, and the, the research that the developer has done, I know they have pulled accident data over the last, I don't know what, what it is, five, 10 years, and extremely limited number of accidents at our crossings, if any.
And I think one thing to keep in mind, we didn't go through it in too much detail, is this isn't just a matter of getting approval for the train not to blow its whistle. This is a matter of investing $700,000 to make those crossings significantly more secure, and then get the trains to stop blowing their whistles.
Yeah.
These are, like, like Justin said, these are going to be, if, if it goes through really overly sophisticated arms that come down, gates and corrals to hold pedestrians in place, new line striping, lights, you know, bells and chimes, the whole audiovisual experience, like, like, like a Pink Floyd laser light show.
Yeah, okay. All right, that's all I have. Thanks.
Thanks, Katie.
Mr. President, if I, if I could add just one thing, Mr. Moore and I attended a meeting back in December with representatives out in the field of FRA and PUC and PennDOT and any other alphabet soup thing you can think of. And there is a federal, it's like FRA.gov that you can go on and has all the accident history for crossings in the state. So, they publish all that information. And it is Lower Makefield. Is, lower is the only place that we know that has one of these.
Thanks, Ed.
Thanks, Ed.
Any, any other comments from the public or questions? All right, we do have a motion on the floor. Then, all those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, then that's unanimous. Thanks.
All right, thank you, gentlemen. And if you'd like to stick around, please feel free, but... Next up for council consideration, Resolution 2022-27, authorizing a master casting agreement between PennDOT and the borough of Bridgeport. Members of council, a master casting agreement is when PennDOT comes through and does any roadwork, whether it's resurfacing, any, any type of repairs, restoration, that is adjacent to or has in its scope of work manhole covers or storm inlet boxes, it's incumbent upon the municipality to make sure that the, the heights of those manholes and the spec of the, the height of the, of the concrete in the manhole or the inlet boxes are going to be flush and conducive to the finished product that PennDOT puts out. So, there are one of two ways to do, skin this cat. You can either sign up for a master casting agreement where PennDOT will handle this for the municipality at an agreed upon, you know, PennDOT scheduled cost, or we can wait to be notified by PennDOT that they are coming through for any number of different projects. And then it's incumbent upon us to hire a contractor and get that work done in a, you know, requisite amount of time. The master casting agreement is certainly the more practical and simpler way to, to address this matter.
I think we're just looking for a motion for the resolution?
Yeah.
That's just what I was going to ask. We need a motion? I'll make it.
I will second that.
We have a motion from Ms. Nolan, seconded by Ms. Funahashi, to pass Resolution 2022-027 regarding the master casting agreement. Additional questions or comments from council? Or the public? All right, all those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye opposed? That's unanimous. Thanks.
All right, thank you. And finally, for council consideration, authorization of the purchase, or expenditure, rather, for the new police patrol vehicle upfitting Marriott emergency equipment at the cost of $14,357. Members of council, in your packets, you will see proposals from three different vendors for the needed upfitting, i.e. the equipment that we, that doesn't come from factory from Ford to turn a vehicle into a patrol vehicle. And Marriott emergency equipment is the lowest quote at 14,357. So, I would, I would ask council to entertain a motion to authorize that and move forward with Marriott.
Yeah, I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Motion from Mr. Fee, seconded by Ms. Gundrum, to authorize the expenditure on the police vehicle. Any additional questions or comments from council? Or the public? All right, seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, that's unanimous. Thank you.
All right, very good. That concludes the manager's report portion of tonight's proceedings. With that, we will, we will move on to unfinished business. Are there any members of council with unfinished business this evening? All right, seeing none, we can proceed to committee reports. Are there any committee reports to share?
I'd just like to make an announcement that we do. The Sustainability Advisory Committee does have a meeting this Thursday, April 14th. Oh, I should know, it's my sister's birthday. This Thursday, April 14th, at 7:30 here in Borough Hall. Again, the, as I rambled a little bit, the Sustainability Committee will be meeting. And also, we are hosting the Spring Cleanup Event next Saturday, April 23rd, begins at 10:00 a.m. You can just meet here outside of Borough Hall. And you can partner up, grab some gloves and bags, and start walking around town and picking up some trash. So, I hope to see you all there.
All right, thank you, Councilwoman Nolan. Moving on to the mayor's report. Mayor Jack's here.
All right, thank you. Sorry, I'm talking some more, guys. I've been a little busy the past couple weeks. I believe there was an extra week than we normally would have between meetings, so I have a couple extra things. I was able to highlight the Pudler's Kitchen and Tap by Concha Hawk and Brewing Company on social media recently as part of my goal of promoting local businesses. Had a great meal, and I would really recommend everyone go support them, as I do with all of our businesses. As noted at our last meeting, I, along with Chief Beretta and our borough manager, Mr. Truman, were working on submitting a grant for license plate readers. And we were actually finally able to submit the grant application at the end of March. So, I wanted to thank both of them for their tremendous efforts in working with me to ensure we were able to submit the application on time. I wanted to thank everyone who joined the First Aid and CPR class. It was this past Wednesday, April 6th. It was pretty well attended, and everyone got to learn how to keep themselves and their loved ones a lot safer in case of an emergency. So, I wanted to thank the Plymouth Ambulance and our officer, Sal, for ensuring this event could happen. Not only was this an informative class, but it was also really engaging. They had us participating on a bunch of different dolls and had some very different life-saving techniques. So, I'm definitely going to be trying to offer this course again later in the year for those who wanted to attend but couldn't. This past Saturday, I was able to attend the Concha Hawk and Spring Fair at their VFW. And I was able to do a Bridgeport Business Double Whammy, because both Frank's Fine Swine and Junebug Sweet Treats were there. Was able to get some goodies from both places. They're always great, never disappointed. So, I'm really excited to see our businesses branching out, as always, into other communities, so they can spread the word about what Bridgeport has to offer. I wanted to announce that my next office hours are going to be this Saturday, would be April 16th, from 10:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. in my office on the first floor of this building in Borough Hall. Everyone's welcome to join. If you have any, any questions, ideas, or if you just want to chat, you're welcome to join. On the, the topic of local businesses, earlier this month, I was able to highlight Butch's Central Service Shop located on Fourth Street. Butch has been in the community for many years now, and always does a great job servicing everyone's vehicles. So, I would definitely recommend considering them for any of your car servicing needs. And finally, something new and exciting, I'm going to be hosting a mental health fair on Saturday, May 14th, from noon to 2:00 p.m. right here in this building, in honor of Mental Health Awareness Month. So, this event's for anyone interested in learning more about mental health in general, anyone looking to help themselves or loved ones, or anyone who just happens to walk in the building. There's going to be organizations sharing information about how they can help you or more broadly the community. I have invited a local poet to do a reading to share her personal mental health journey, which I thought was an exciting take on the topic. There's going to be free wellness giveaways, which is a fun thing, and a lot more. So, if you have any questions, please feel free to reach out to me. It's going to be a pretty engaging and interactive day of learning and excitement. So, that is all I have for you this evening. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mayor Jack's here. Moving on to new business, are there any members of council with new business this evening? All right, seeing none, we can move forward to announcements. Are there any announcements this evening?
I have an announcement. I'll be resigning my council position effective at the conclusion of this meeting tonight. My wife and I have made the decision to move out of the borough to be closer to some family. I'd like to thank the members of the town for allowing me to represent them for the last few years. It's truly been an honor to serve. This is a pretty bittersweet moment for me. I'm really going to miss the community a great deal. Bridgeport's really always going to hold a special place in my heart. Thank you.
Mr. Scott, I just wanted to point out, first, we'll miss you as well. And thank you for your service here. What I've always really appreciated about having you on council was how seriously you took everything that came before us. You, you really put thought into everything on the agenda. I appreciate that. That's with all sincerity.
Thank you.
Yeah, I, I agree, Corey. I have enjoyed getting to know you over the last several years. You know, this is, this is a, a, a great group of elected officials. Have, all of you have, at one time or another, you know, put heavy emphasis on community events. But, you know, Corey, you, you, you walk the walk and you talk the talk. You're, you're at just about every event that I can think of. And, you know, the last few years, you, I, I, I wouldn't have been able to pull off movie night without your help. You know, whenever we do a, a town cleanup, you're on the, you're on the ones and twos. You know, you're, you're, you're grilling burgers and dogs afterwards. You know, we, I'm sure, I speak for everybody when we say we wish you and Ashley all the best.
Thank you very much.
I won't be so eloquent. I'm just going to say, oh, man. But again, thank you. It has been a pleasure working with you.
All right, seeing no further announcements, I'm not going to let this go on any further. I don't want any other resignations. Let's move on to public comment. Are there any members of the public that wish to speak this evening? Sir, come on up, please. State your name and your address, please.
My name is Joseph Martinelli. I've been in business, all right, I live at 658 Loraine Street. Been in business for over 30 years. I applied for a permit this last month, I would say. I came in this building, nobody was here, did not know you would take your lunch at 1:00 to 2:00. My apologies, I'm sorry for the lady that I disturbed. I made three phone calls to this place. Nobody got back to me. The first thing I heard on that thing was call 911. I should have called 911. There was nobody in this building. The lights were all blaring, the doors are wide open. Anybody could have done anything in this building, as far as I know. All right, that was my first complaint. Second complaint, I applied for a permit to get. I paid my dues. I handed the lady, or I should not say I did, my son came in the second time, handed the lady a $50 bill for my registration. Never got a receipt for that. Never got no change for that. I also gave her a check so she could take some permits out of, which I did get the one permit from your township official. Seven to 10 days after the fact, I received this on the job site through the Realtor. That's how I got this paper. It should have been mailed to me. I paid for it. It's mine, correct? All right. I went to Upper Darby. I got their permit. This is what they handed me. Within five seconds of giving my information to them, they gave me a description of everything that needed to be done on the job. I didn't receive nothing in this township. I also received the permit through Upper Darby Township within 15, 15 minutes of the time of me paying my check. In this township, your township guy said he had 15 days to give it to me, yelling at me at the job site. I, right now, do not want to do no more jobs in your township. I expect my money back that I paid for this license. I wish it, I, if you want 1% of the 12, you could keep it. If not, I expect the 11% back, or 11 months back. Also, I did not receive the other job that I was doing on Fourth Street. I turned that job down. Did not even get the response of my money back for that permit yet. So, that's why I'm here tonight, wondering how long do I have to wait for my money back on these permits? Can anybody answer that question to me? Or...
Well, first off, thanks for bringing it forward to us. At this time, we'll, we'll take the information. We may not have the answer for you at this meeting.
Okay.
But we've got it on the record now. We'll take it back, and somebody will reach out to you.
Steve knows all about it. So, Steve was the guy that came to my house.
We'll, we'll have, we'll have somebody reach out to you.
Okay.
You got it. And just leave a phone number. Well, Steve had your contact info. We'll get back to you. Thank you.
Any other public comments?
That's a great meeting, as far as I was concerned. Thanks. Yes, Katie, come on. We'd love to hear from you.
Katie Fulmer, again. 207 Mil Street. I know that, like, a month or two back, you guys were in the process of purchasing software for the emergency services situation. Is there an update on what that is? Because with all of the rain that has been going on, I can tell you the anxieties are high.
Katie, we're in the process of, of executing that, and there will be a, a, a press release or a, a, a public update issued via social media and our other outlets and avenues in the very near future.
Define near future. Six weeks, eight weeks, 12 weeks?
No, two to, I'd say two to four.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's great.
On the shorter side, all right?
Fabulous.
You got it.
Thank you.
Any other comments? All right, seeing none, council could certainly entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
All right, it's 8:19. Thank you, everybody. We are adjourned.